We're going to call this regular board meeting to order. The meeting of January 26, 2004. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. White. Mr. Minkovich.
Present.
Please excuse us.
Ms. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
Here.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Ms. Lanacy.
Present.
Sprayer's present.
Would you please stand and remove your hats for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any changes in the agenda?
We will need an executive session this evening, but it's on the agenda already.
Okay, okay. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as it stands?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Madam President, I make a motion we approve the minutes of our previous meeting.
Support.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on the minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Carr.
Mr. Clark, personnel actions tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Madam President, our first personnel action requires a motion by the board to approve the separation agreement and release and discharge of all claims of retirement and resignation for Mrs. Alanis Appleby, payroll retirement coordinator effective December 31, 2004.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the separation agreement as stated by Mr. Clark.
Okay.
I support.
Thank you. Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Our next action, a motion is needed by the board to accept the retirement of Ms. Irene Patterson. Mrs. Patterson was a longtime hall monitor and security guard for Ramus Middle School. Her effective retirement was effective January 1, 2004.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the retirement of Irene Patterson.
Okay, support. Okay, any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our next item, a motion by the board to accept employment of Mr. Kyle Rerick, our new industrial arts technical education teacher at Ramus Middle School effective January 22, 2004.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Remove we accept the recommendation of the personnel director for the industrial arts technical teacher, Kyle Rahm.
Support.
Okay. Any questions? Is he a local, Mr. Clark?
No, he's not.
Okay.
He's a Uper.
Oh, for heaven's sake, really?
Yep.
Is that the fellow I met here one day? That, okay.
And our last personnel action is a-
Well, wait a minute, we got a motion. Any questions?
No.
Opposed? I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay. And our last action is a for your information, employment for Ms. Kathy Legennis, our new PM kindergarten aide at Ramus Elementary School, and Ms. Teresa Holton, our new bus aid transportation department. Thank you.
Mr. Ruth here, bills for payment.
Superintendent Carr, President Lanacy, members of the Board of Education, we are seeking a motion for approval of the bills as presented. We have five registers totaling $985,150.87.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend that we pay the bills for... Mr. Ruth here.
I support.
Okay. Any questions on the bills? Since there's no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The next item for your subsequent approval would be the grants that have been presented to you.
Oh, wait, whoa, whoa, you're jumping ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Next item is the adult ed-
Oh, yeah.
-recognition. We have a cast of thousands here tonight. We're very proud of our cast tonight and want to recognize everybody for the tremendous accomplishment. We know that there've been tremendous sacrifices and we believe in helping folks who are willing to make these sacrifices to achieve their GED or high school diploma. We believe very, very strongly in this and we encourage it. The state has done a number on us. They've made it very difficult for these programs to continue and these folks have stuck with us and we as a Board of Education, you as a Board of Education, this community has shown that it believes in people who want a second or a third chance or whatever it might take to come along the line. It makes me so very proud. I get chills because we are successful in helping young adults and middle-aged adults and older adults achieve something that is very important in their educational background and for their future. So, I'm very proud to have you all here tonight. Charmin Spicer is with us to help make a presentation and to recognize these fine folks for their truly outstanding accomplishments. Very, very proud. And this entire board shares this pride. I know they do. They feel very strongly. Charmin?
Superintendent Carr, I'd just like to add in addition to the achievement that you created for yourself by earning your high school diploma, this is also a great achievement.
Yes, please use the microphone.
No, no. She's got to cut in the middle, isn't she?
Stand by the white square there.
Stand by the, stand by the white square.
You're on candid camera.
Face the camera this way, Charmin, please.
All right, ready, Charmin? This is also a great achievement.
Testing, all right. Can tell I'm not used to this. I'd also like to acknowledge the achievement that you've created for your children, those of you who are parents. You've not only affected your lives and changed your lives for the better, but research has shown that because of your accomplishing your high school diploma, that your children will have a much greater chance of succeeding in school also. So, congratulations for your generation to come after you. We have 21 high school graduate, graduates from our first semester that ended in January. Out of those 21, 10 were not working and were able to be with us tonight. You'll note on your list of our graduates that we also have 55 GED earners. We didn't invite them because we knew there wouldn't be enough room, but we will invite all of them and all of you to our commencement ceremony on June 3. But we wanted to hurry and award them their statements of graduation tonight. So, Superintendent Carr will do that.
Please excuse me if I mispronounce your name. It's certainly not by design. Mr. Mitchell Borah. Ms. Lori Gay. Good luck. Thank you. Congratulations. Ms. Autumn Jackay. Congratulations. Mr. Joseph Salazar. Mr. John Sanderlin. And Ms. Jennifer Young. You all came out on a very, very treacherous evening and we really appreciate the fact that you came and we wish you all the very, very best of luck. Come back and see us. We really, and send others who need the same thing, please, if you want to help. Thank you very much. If you choose, Mr. Cruz will take pictures out in the hallway and you're free to leave or you're welcome to come back in and stay for the rest of the meeting. But he'll take some pictures for our local newspapers and we appreciate your participation. And congratulations to the family, supported everyone.
That's right.
Done such a tremendous, tremendous job. And there's a little guy right there clapping.
Thank you, parents, for coming out tonight for the event.
Oh, I'm trying to figure out. Yeah. Because it doesn't go any order. Scary. I couldn't figure it out. No. Yeah. It's like 31 up here. There's 40. And it says Taylor parent.
Mr. Dolan.
Thank you, Mr. Carr, members of the board. You've heard from other schools previously about their initiatives that become more familiar with their students and help to establish a positive school environment. Tonight, we have Mr. Kimbrough and his staff here tonight to talk about their advisory program. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. I would like to thank the Board of Education and the Central Office of Administration for allowing us an opportunity to present what we feel be a very positive program for students at Ramus Middle School. To give you a little background, we started working on this project this summer with a cross-section of teachers who spent two weeks in the summertime organizing this program. Now, when you see that booklet, this is a work in progress. I mean, by no means do we feel that we have all answered, but we definitely feel that we have a right start. Secondly, we will evaluate this program at the end of the year. And we'll use three or four things to evaluate, to assess this program. One would be daily attendance, next would be grades, and also the referral rates. If you have any question, I would like for you to save the question, concerns, or comment until the end of the presentation. I would like to introduce Ms. Betty Santo.
Good evening. We're here, obviously, to share the advisor program. We've put a lot of work into the program and, as Mr. Kimbrough said, we are definitely trying to improve it on a continual basis. That's something that makes a program work, especially for the students that we have during the two years that they're at the middle school. Daily program for the advisor program, it's structured first thing in the morning. We have special activities. Those activities are implemented for the students so that they can hopefully grow academically and socially. The program is designed to focus on the development of the student in the following areas: intellectual, psychological, physical, social, emotional, and ethical. Each day of the week has a specific topic that we cover in the advisor program. And the Monday activity is Channel 1. Tuesday is a theme day. Wednesday is our silent reading. Thursday, trivia football. And Friday is our teacher read aloud. Channel 1 is a news program aimed at the middle school and high school level students as the viewer. Channel 1 allows the students to voice their opinions on a current event. It provides information for the students on teen issues and keeps them up to date or informed on a daily basis of the events that are happening. Channel 1 also has a website to support the Channel 1 program. Students can become active with Channel 1, contact, and sometimes offer their own opinions. And Channel 1 is often receptive of those opinions. Nine themes are discussed throughout the school year. We divided it up monthly. We have September as getting to know each other within our advisor program. We have October as I can make a difference. November is dealing with conflict. December is family. January is overcoming obstacles. February is going beyond giving. March is diversity. April, self-awareness. May, our choices. And June, rediscovery. The themes that were chosen were selected by the advisory committee this summer. A lot of those were based on our MEEP objectives as well as North Central criteria. Teachers are provided with lessons for each of the themes on a monthly basis. Lesson plans include handouts for students, discussions, questions, and follow-up activities. The primary objective is to develop lifetime readers. All participate in the reading program, including staff as well as students. The students can expand their variety of reading materials by bringing in reading materials themselves. Teachers often supply reading materials. And our media center is very active in making sure that we have reading materials for the students via CART or sending students to the media center. We play trivia football on Thursday. And the objective to, is to reinforce our benchmarks in the core curriculum and also supply a competitive environment for the students and an enjoyable environment. Each team competes among their assigned groups. Questions reflect the curriculum in the four academic areas. Correct or incorrect answers result in what we call a yardage gain or a yardage loss and students gain points when they compete. The points are awarded when a team scores a touchdown. Scores are reported for an individual to keep tally and they result in the playoffs that we have both grade levels eight and seven. By reading out loud, we model reading techniques and this is our read it loud on Fridays. Reading relates and promotes discussion among the monthly themes that we have. Readings is selected from the chicken soup for the preaching soul. And students are actively engaged in the pleasure of enjoyment of reading, also the discussions that go along with the readings that we've chosen for the monthly themes. The benefits of our advisor program, it fosters peer relationships and positive relationships between students and adults. Teachers act as advocates as their advisory students or their advisory students. We have a small ratio of advisors to advisee and it promotes a personal interaction between the staff member and the students. We can encourage and it allows individual mentoring of students and the advisees to be able to encourage better grades, referrals, cut down on that, and tutoring of other students within our advisor program. And it provides time for communication of school news and other activities within the building. And that is the sum of our advisory program. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question. This advisory program, is this the first hour of the day?
It's the beginning of the day. It's not considered a first hour, but it's our time period at the very beginning of the day.
And how long is this for?
25 minutes.
Do we have any other questions?
How responsive, Madam Chair, how responsive are the students to this?
We have a pretty exciting program this year. The students accept it and they fall right into the program. They're active in a lot like Channel 1, trivia football, the SSR of the reading of the chicken soup for the preaching soul. They've really gotten involved in the program this year. So, it's become a very positive way to enforce the educational opportunities for the students to reinforce their learning.
Okay. Melvin, how many kids in each advisory group? Well, there might be.
Twenty.
Everyone is an advisor in the spirit? Counselors included? Are there any advisors?
Mine's a little bigger.
Yours a little bit bigger? That editorial comment?
No, I, I, no, I chose it because I have some of the students that are active in my leadership program, in the advisor.
This is another move in our proactive approach to letting students become a part of what the educational process is. We applaud these efforts and it takes, it takes time. I mean, you don't get the immediate result. This is something that over six months, a year, two years, five years will help the climate of our, our school system.
Madam Chair, do you, do you find that it gives the kids time to kind of get ready, ready for the rest of the day?
Yeah, definitely. If we have students that forgot something or a student who needs some help with math, they are more frequently will come in or social studies and say, can anybody help me with this? I couldn't do it last night. And then we try to buddy up, give them a little extra support.
And also what it does is allow students and advisor to pick up on potential-
Give him the mic. He needs the mic, then.
It also allows students and staff to pick up on any concern the students have before the day began. You know, quite often they refer to the social worker, the counselors, okay?
Madam Chairman, if I may. How are the students placed into the groups? Is there any special way as far as advisor, I mean?
No, they're Ramler, Ramblers selected.
Just, you just go through and put it in?
Right.
So that they're not with all their buddies or anything like that?
Right.
Okay.
Nor are they, are they with special ed teachers? If they're a special ed student, they're all just, it's all cross-section in every advisor group?
Oh, okay.
So, it's fun for the special ed teachers too.
Special ed kids are into the regular group as well?
Right, and it gives the special ed teachers a chance to see a cross-section of the kids.
Melvin, we've discussed it about keeping the seventh graders, teachers keeping their kids for next year. Are you guys still discussing that as a possibility? So, they have them for two years, the advisor groups, or no?
Well, we've had some preliminary discussion about them, but no decision has been made yet.
Madam Chair, I have one other question. Did I understand this is the first year, this is our first or second year? We've been doing it for a while?
Well, we've been doing it for a long, long time.
Oh, okay.
But based what we've done, we've gone back and redesigned the program and gave it more structure.
It seems like I remember when my son was in middle school, they had, they had that, so, okay.
We've been doing it, well, I was there in 87 and we've been doing some sort of theme around working with kids on an individual basis. But we've tied it into themes that go through the whole year and then specific needs of kids. And they seem to really like this book. Every teacher reads out loud on Friday and then that ties it into next week, what we're going to do for the theme day on Tuesday. So, and it's kind of, there's poignant stories and there are sad stories and there are problems that kids face every day. So, they like it.
So, we kind of just revamped, kicked it up a notch?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, thank you.
Mr. Ruth here.
Again, for the board review, we're proposing or presenting to you this evening for your approval, the grants and the various stages, both from the federal and state providers. The reason we're seeking approval is that we actually adopt these and budgets are formulated for each one of these. And for audit purposes, we need board approval in order to record this as a budgetary process.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the grant awards for fiscal year 2003, 2004.
I'll support.
Any questions?
I just had a quick one.
Go ahead.
What was flow-through?
Every year, we have both a preschool and a regular flow-through programs. These are special needs students that, that Ms. Jeffrey has programs to help for.
Okay, thank you.
I want to know what the fruit and vegetable is.
We were successful last year, this is the tail end this year, of fruit and vegetable program. Actually, it was started by Aramart and has continued under Sodexo. And what this is, and it's primarily at Corey Elementary School and it provides free of cost fruits and vegetables that they use in the food service program. And it's been very well received.
It really is?
Yes, it has.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We have two field trips for Cedar Point. I think we could roll them into one motion if you like. One is for a Saturday for the Ramus Elementary School Safety Patrol or Service Patrol. And the other is for sixth grade students from the Wick Elementary School. We took a position a number of years ago that fun trips were going to take place on other than school time and these both fit that criteria. And the cost will be covered by the participants. I think you can roll them into one, into one motion.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve Cedar Point trip for Wick Elementary School for Saturday, May 22, 2004, and for Ramus Elementary School for Saturday, June 5, 2004.
I support.
Okay, any questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question. The one for Ramus L, that is on, isn't that the day of graduation? I know last year, a lot of parents complained a lot about them having their students going to Cedar Point and it was graduation day and their sibling was graduating and how did they choose between? So, if they're aware that that's on graduation day.
That is graduation day, too.
I mean, I'll have a problem with it, but it just might be something you might want to mention.
Need to be aware of it now. June 5.
I think we can-
But I heard a lot of parents complain about that last year.
We can, we should mention that to those folks and if they want to change it to a different date, we will work, okay? Let's give us the approval to go ahead and do the trip and if that objection is there, we will work with them to change the date.
There was, I'm glad you brought that up, Sharon.
I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to bring it to the fore.
We'll bring it to their attention as well. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Relative to the public, there've been, there's been some discussion in our community relative to the granting of an easement in the Mount Pleasant subdivision. There has been no easement granted for anyone to do anything across school property or in any other fashion in the Mount Pleasant area. There's been a request that the board consider such an activity and such an act. There are many, many steps and many pieces of information that are missing from this and the board at this point has directed the superintendent and central office to look into all the legalities relative to what kind of county regulations or county requirements might be and also legal requirements and so forth. The board is not inclined and has not taken action on this and it would be a month or longer before anything would even be considered as it will take us that much time to find out if we have a legal obligation and if we do, then what our choices are. So, if you're interested in this particular item, stay in contact by talking to myself or Mr. Ruth here and we will keep you posted with what's going on. But we're working with your city officials and folks in the neighborhood to do the right thing for our community.
Thanks for talking about that, Mr. Carr, because we, we have received calls on this. Since we have no communication and expression from the public, yes, sir.
I just have one question. Joan, have we had any overtures or questions from the developer or builder in regards to the easement? Have you had any discussions with them?
Yes, we've had a couple of discussions with them and they were told initially to put a request in writing. They have, through their attorney, put a request in writing. I've had conversation with them and brought up many, many questions that really have not been answered in the proposal that they made at this time. So, we're nowhere near even considering granting anything at this point. We will be looking at it and keeping everyone posted through conversation here at the board table or through individual conversations if individuals would call us. It is not necessary to give us a million phone calls at this point in time. No action's been taken, no action is contemplated. We're looking only to gather information and see what legal requirements are out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Items of interest are self-explanatory. We do need a executive session for a few moments tonight. The weather's bad, and we want to move on, but let's move into executive session for two minutes. We've got varieties of different kinds of negotiations going on we need to talk about.
Do we have any questions or concerns of Board members?
I was just going to make one quick comment. We were at a meeting today, and they did a brief discussion about the consolidation of election date bills, and I think there's nothing that has to be done by us. I think our next election that gets affected is in 2005, but it looks like we will be able to handle an election every year, it's just that it will be in May instead of June. But our terms of office would still run the same from July 1st to end of June. So, it really didn't hurt us in any way, from what I've seen so far.
In fact, it will give us an opportunity, I think, to open discussions with the city. Presently, we're running about nineteen or twenty precincts, and we might open discussions about the possibility of, on these school elections, maybe running a smaller number of precincts, which will bring the cost of the election down.
Oh, boy.
So, we could take a look at that as we, as we move ahead.
Okay. Can I have motions that go into executive session?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Okay.
I support.
Do I have a call?
Ms. White?
President?
Ms. Minkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Rasco?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Lanasi?
Yes.
Ms. Frere, yes.
There will be no action taken after the executive session.
I motion that we reconvene from executive session.
Support.
Roll call.
All in favor?
General roll call.
Yeah, we gotta do roll.
Ms. White?
Mr. Minkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Rasco?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Lanasi?
Yes.
Ms. Frere, yes.
Now, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.